Lunchtime like this, they come, a quick prayer for an hour and they all go back to work. Everywhere in the nation. So there's something happening there of God. So we are very excited to have one of those fathers who have been foundational to that move of prayer. From the days of Idi Amin, he will tell us the story coming down to various historical, you know, times in Uganda. And we felt it's important for him to come today and share the burden and the story and the narrative of how did Uganda become the way it became in the area of prayer and uniting the church? Many other things I can say about them and one of the key things is the unity of the body. Not only across Pentecostal charismatics, the unity of the body in Uganda across denominations, including mainline churches, something very different. I think the Anglican Church in Uganda is very charismatic, very Pentecostal. I don't know how they managed to do that. These are the things that we're talking about when they say there's a move of God. Now, before he comes up front, I'm gonna ask Mamalinda Kobota just to come and share briefly of our journey in South Africa in the area of prayer and how we've walked and how we've journeyed so far. Just to give a synopsis so that as Dr. Mulinde speaks, he speaks on the basis of some of our experiences. Mamalinda Kobota also needs no introduction. She is Umama Omthandas. Umama Omthandas, a woman of prayer in our territory and region. Yes, thank you, Pastor.
San bonan, dumela, hallelujah. Greetings in the wonderful and precious name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. We are grateful to be here and even back in this room. This room. You know, I pastor the church and my understanding was intercession is for intercessors and I was not. I was a pastor. Can you see how you can be deceived? But today I'm known as Umama Omthandas. Today I know that I am an intercessor. I am a watchman in my nation and a gatekeeper, hallelujah. But back then, I didn't know those things. So, in that, you know, but the burden for the nation and for Africa, I carried for many, many years. Praying and crying to God. So I will just bring us to, when I understood that there's a calling upon our nation that God has chosen our nation to bring revival from Cape to Cairo. So, I understood also that this revival will not come except we pray. So I was crying to the Lord because I was crying for the continent to say, if really you want us to, you have chosen. So how is it going to happen? Because we are not praying. Everybody's praying in their churches, whatever. But we're not praying for revival or praying for the nation and the continent in that sense. But the Lord being good, he every time, he would say, I'm going to do it through South Africa. He never changed. So around 2008, I must say. So during the, all the time before that time, the people who were really carrying the burden of prayer were our white brothers. They were the ones who were doing prophetic actions. They were the ones who were doing prayer journeys and all of that. We were pastoring our churches and we were fine. Until the Lord provoked some of us by saying, there are ungodly altars in your land and your leaders are drawing power from them. You need to deal with it. And for it to be a confirmation, the same message was received by two different people. And when we spoke, we all agreed and we started for the first time doing journeys in the nation. We, in fact, we prayed and we said, we don't know where the altars are. We didn't even know they were ungodly altars. Let's start there. We don't know where they are. We don't know how to find them. And if you lead us, we will go. So we started. That was the first prayer journey, which led us to come here in this room. And when we gathered here for a prayer conference, the guests who was going to come did not make it. And we found ourselves here and we were set up. And that led us to cry and to the Lord to pray, the prayer that was going on here. And that led us to take a step and covenant with the Lord that we will take responsibility for the nation. That was the birth of South African prayer movement for change. That was in 2009, 2009 beginning. So that is the history of the South African prayer movement where God gathered apostles and prophets to take responsibility for prayer. And so we started then and, you know, our white brothers were very excited and embraced us because I think they had been praying, where are the indigents? Why are we carrying prayer, where are they? So they embraced us and all of that, they were excited. And but some of us, because there was that burden of prayer, were already connected to the South Afri-, to the Africa House of Prayer, going to Nigeria, all of that. We were, that was happening. Also having prayer conferences in our churches. But there was no national prayer movement. But by the grace of God, this prayer movement has existed until now. By the grace of God. And the revival of prayer has broken out in our nation. Did not end here. The Lord stared at other groups and other people. There are many groups now that are gathering and praying for the nation. And I think the explosion of this happened when COVID hit. Our former Chief Justice called, made a clarion call to say, now, this God will be saying his powerful, his this is this. We need him now. And therefore gather and pray to him to deliver us. And some of us responded to that call and called a prayer day before the lockdown. In that prayer, there was a prophetic word that came saying, I am going to deliver you from this pandemic. Hallelujah. And so you are my caution. And we are standing here today because he did. He did. In fact, he didn't say you, he said Africa from this pandemic. And he did. But that birthed another move of prayer where people are praying online. Obviously, it was online because it was the lockdown. But that prayer, we thought was just for the pandemic, has continued. This is the sixth year of that prayer. Praying four times a day. The gate of 6:00 AM, the gate of 12:00, the gate of 6:00 PM, the gate of 12:00 midnight to 3:00. I'm just using that as one example of a revival of prayer. So there is a revival of prayer in our nation in different provinces, different groups. And all these groups, it's in that denomination. People are gathering from different churches to pray for the nation. So more or less, that is the background I can offer. Hallelujah.
Praise the Lord. So there's been a work of prayer, I think, in a nutshell, in the country. Maybe not as coordinated as we'd love it to be. We trust in God for better coordination, better mobilization. And the reason, one of the reasons why we had asked, we asked Dr. Mulinde to come is because in Uganda, they have mastered united prayer across denominations and across various groupings. He will talk more about it if you are gonna be here in the conference. So that is our desire. How do you do it? You know, in business, church is the only place that does not ask how you did it. Church, we feel, I'll figure it out. But in business, you do benchmarking. You go, you find out, how did they do it? In business, you even send, you know, some, a team of people to go and study and understudy another company who's selling the same product, maybe motor industry, to go and see how do they do their cars. But church is the only place where we don't wanna learn from another. I can figure it out. I'm also anointed. That level of pride will slow us down. We need to humble ourselves and really learn from others and see what God has done and what God has been doing. And I know that we've been exposed a lot to Africa West and their style of influence. Maybe it's time to hear from Africa East. And hear what is it that the Lord has been doing also on that side? So that we also learn from that angle of, you know, the continent. Please help me welcome Dr. Mulinde as he comes. Let's give a hand for the servant of the Lord as he comes over.
Thank you, thank you so much for that warm welcome. Let's give Jesus another hand of praise greater than all. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, King of glory. Blessed be our holy name. You are worthy, oh God. You are worthy of all praise. You are worthy of all glory and honor. We bless you, Lord Jesus. Lord Jesus, we thank you for a moment like this. It is such moments that remind us that your kingdom is bigger than anything we know. It's bigger than our lives, bigger than our families, bigger than our cities, even bigger than our nations. So Lord, we pray, let your kingdom come. And let your will be done on earth as it is in heaven to the glory of your wondrous name in Jesus Christ. Amen. Amen. Please take your seat in his sweet presence. It's an honor and privilege for us to be here. I'm here with Pastor Rose Nsimbe. Rose is my real sister. And for the last 40 years, we've walked together and served together. We were met by the Lord in 1988. That's almost 40 years ago. And the Lord conferred upon us the calling we normally call the trumpet mandate, to go and prepare nations for the second coming of the Lord. And we've learned a lot of things along the way. Some things shocked us as they came across to us. Other things were an answer to prayer after many, many frustrations. I want to thank the leadership here for inviting us and welcoming us. I believe it will be a journey we will walk together. Usually, we don't go to places for a one-off time of ministry. We consider ourselves as builders who put a brick upon a brick until it can show the testimony of God's working. Amen. I used to come here in the South Africa in the early 2000s. And then there was a break for a long time when I did not come. There was a time we came with Rose. I don't remember which year that was, in Natal and a few other places. So we felt a year ago that it was God's timing for yet another visit, another visit to South Africa. And this time, there's a real sense of urgency about the land of South Africa. When it comes to talk about prayer for a nation, you can approach it so many, many different ways and from so many different vantage. There is a question that I've been confronted with in many parts of the world. I think when the first time I really came across it was in Colombia, in Bogota. After I ministered, there was a lot of excitement and enthusiasm. You could tell the spirits of people was lifted up and they, they believed God would move. It was just before lunch meeting. And as people were coming forward, greeting and thanking for the message, an old man waited for everybody. Then eventually, he got his chance to talk to me. And he was so full of joy, very big smile. Then he said to me, allow me to ask you one thing. I said, yes. And he said, don't raise their faith too high. I said, what? He said, don't raise their faith too high. Because when it does not happen, they will be hurt much more. They will give up. I said, but why wouldn't it happen? God means what he says and he says what he means. He said, son, look at me. I have been praying for revival. Not five years, not 10 years, not 20 years, but more than 30 years. And I have not seen it happen. So don't raise their faith too high. Because when it does not happen, their faith will be broken and possibly beyond repair. I said, but I have seen God do it over and over and over again. And many, many times, I've seen him do it quickly. He said, son, when I was young like you, I was naive. I thought if we prayed harder, we can make God move. If we fasted more, we'll make him do it. We thought we could somehow manipulate him into action. But now I have learned that God is sovereign. You cannot just push him over. You cannot manipulate him. You cannot force him. He will do it when he wants, where he wants, with whom he wants. All you can do is to present him with your requests and let him do as he chooses. Now, for the first time, I saw the logic of what he was saying. I realized, okay, it's true. You cannot push God. You cannot pray him into excitement. You cannot fast him into moving when you want and not when he wants. And I said, I understand. Thank you. So we parted company with him. And I was still wondering, I wonder how I should more modify my approach. I wonder how, but I trusted, okay, I'll think about that. So we went to lunch with these pastors. And as we were having lunch, there was a nagging feeling in my spirit, as if I've forgotten something. You know, if you, like you have your Bible and you leave it somewhere, you feel something is missing. So I was trying to find what did I misplace? And the more the time went, the more agitated my spirit began. And then I realized it's just about 20 minutes to the next session. And suddenly, I felt panic. I thought, how am I going to present God now? I cannot use the old approach I'm used to because of this word of caution that came to me from the old man. And suddenly, I felt I'm not ready to minister. So I said to the pastor, please, allow me to go back to my hotel. And I will minister in the evening session. Please let this session be taken by somebody else. He wasn't happy, but somehow he agreed. And they used that session just for prayer. They didn't put in another speaker. I got back to my hotel and opened the door, got in and leaned against the door. I said, Lord, I don't know what to do. And immediately, it was like a rush of wind and air hit me. And I found myself falling on my knees and burning over. And he said, how could you? How could you believe such words spoken about me? I have worked with you for a long time. I've shown you my character. I've shown you my faithfulness. How could you believe that I'm so undependable that you cannot present me faithfully and assuredly to my people? What does the word say? And immediately, the scriptures about that teaching where Jesus said, if a man came to his friend in the middle of the night and said, my friend has come and I have nothing to put before him, will you give me some bread? And he said, even if the friend did not want to give him bread because he has already locked up his house, but for the persistence of this friend, he will wake up and give him the bread. And then Jesus said, so therefore ask, it shall be given. Seek and you'll find. Knock and the door shall be opened. And then Jesus said, if you who are evil know how to give good things to your children, how much more will the Father give the Spirit to those who ask? Now, I want you to compare the two versions, the version of the other old man, of God's sovereignty, and the version of God's word. And I was like, Lord, I am confused. I don't know. He presented that and now you are presenting this. And the Lord said to me, and remember the parable of the widow and the unholy judge? How she went to him and he was not willing to give her judgment? But because she was, she persisted, she persisted, he eventually said, oh, I'll give her justice or else she'll wear me out. And Jesus said, listen to this unholy judge. Won't your Father in heaven give you what you pray for as you pray night and day? And then he said, truly, truly, I say to you, he will give you the answer to your prayers and quickly. Quickly. Now, I'm not trying to excite you here. I'm trying to say, check your theology. Check your theology of prayer. There is so much wrong theology on prayer. And we have come to accept it. God is undependable. God says it but does not do it. He promises but he does not fulfill. God says, ask, it shall be given. But somehow, I ask and then I say, well, if he does not do it, I have plan B. And that's the approach that the most part of the church has about him. And he is not amused. God loves shameless faith. Faith that says, it may not even be convenient, but I know him. I know his heart. I know his love. I know his compassion. I know his faithfulness. I will still ask and I will trust that he will do it. That is the man who came in the night. He says, I know you are sleeping and I know it's not convenient, but please, I believe in your goodness. And God loves faith. That audacity that says, I will go to him and I know he will answer. And you know, with that story of the widow, Jesus said, but when the sun comes, will he find faith on earth? The issue is not prayer or not, it's faith. Do you have the faith that he is going to do it? He said, when you ask anything, believe that you have received it and you will see it. And it says also, without faith, it's impossible to please God. Impossible. So I'm addressing this from, my first point is, it's not so much whether you are prayed or not prayed. The issue is, how have you prayed? Did you pray believing it will happen? Did you pray believing he's faithful enough to do what he says? And there is a prayer we learned. There's a time we were in, 1988, we spent the whole year in the mission field without any supporter, any sponsor or any helper. We had to learn to trust the Lord. For the first three, four months, I would go back to town, to the capital city where I'd left some investments going and I would come back with money. One time, I went on a mission like that and I didn't, I got some money. And I came home and the team, I had a team of about 10 people. They were like, looking at me in a funny way. So I said, what is it? They said, we shall talk, we shall talk. So when we settled down, they said, the Lord spoke to us while you are away. I said, uh huh. And he said, why are you going back and forth looking for money as if he cannot provide for us? I said, what? He said, yeah. It is a Luganda word that he used. It is not just expressing going back and forth, but it is even looking down. What, what is this back and forth you are going around? As if I am not able to look after you. Humanly, I didn't feel good with the message. So I, what I did, I kept quiet. We ate our dinner and then I brought out all the money I had brought, broke it into equal portions and gave each one a portion. I said, this is the last time I'm going to go for any money. I will never go again to look for money. So what, take this, you know how you are going to use it. When it is finished, don't look up to me again. There was a little bit of flesh there. But anyway, from that moment, and it was in the month of April, I did not go back to look for money. But God took care of us. But God took care of us. Sometimes we would go, every day we would go preaching door to door. Sometimes walking like three, four miles to go to our target village. And we would come back home and found, and find food at the door. Potatoes, beans, peas, mint. And that became our life. We stopped caring about money. We spent more than six, seven months without touching money. Real money. We, we just knew he is going to provide. And then there were days when he did not. We'd go for three, four, five days without any food. There's nothing and we would just be saying, oh, we hope the Lord will bring some food today. Then we would go, we would not miss our preaching. We would still go out and preach and come back. If there's no food, we would go and get some herbs, put in water and boil water and drink that. And we would always pray and kept our joy. So that's how we lived those months from around April to December. He taught us to completely trust in him, completely and never to doubt him, even when the evidence showed negatively. And I think this is part of what built the prayer stamina in our lives. We trusted him completely. Then there are times when we came back from the war field, came back to Kampala and we were in the sub, in the rural areas. We were born in the city, but we had never ministered in the city. We ministered in rural areas. Then there's a time we came and rented a small office on a building in the city center so that we can coordinate our work nationwide. And it so happened that the person who was sub-renting us was also renting from the landowner and he could not pay anymore. And he had another building, so he was making plans to shift. And he said to me, John, would you like to take over my rental contract? I said, yes. How much is it? And the money he asked, we had never handled in our lives. And he was not asking it for himself. It was the money he was paying. I said, yes, we will take it. And it so happened that we were praying and fasting for forty days in a friend's house. So I went back to the team. Pastor Rose was part of it. And I told them, look, we have an opportunity to own a place in the city center. Our own place. Let's pray for that. So we began to pray and we were praying fervently and passionately. And after prayer, we all went to bed. And as I was sleeping and sleep was taking me off, a voice spoke to me and said, John. Said, I woke up and he said, why do you want that building? And I was quick, I said, Lord, it will give us this opportunity. It will give us that opportunity. It will give us this. We will be able to minister in the city center. And after that, he said nothing. So I eventually slept off. In the morning, before dawn, we would wake up like five, but I woke up earlier. So I decided not to disturb anybody and I went to pray alone. And I was talking about this, 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 this. Then I reached the issue of the building. And I began to plead for the building. Lord, you promised. Then the voice spoke to me and said, why do you want that building? And I was going to immediately do the same as I had done in the night, explain why we need it. Then it struck me, no, wait. This is the same question he asked last night. He's asking it again. That means the answer you gave was not acceptable. And in that moment, as I thought, so what do I say? And suddenly my eyes opened and I saw the real reason I really wanted the building. It was prestige. I wanted to be in the city center. Give us this, we will now be able to stand among the recognized that we also are in the city center, that we also have a building, that it was all selfish. And I felt so ashamed of myself. I said, Lord, I am so sorry. I am so sorry. I didn't realize I was doing this for selfish motives. Do you remember what the Bible says? You fight and you don't have because you don't pray. But when you pray, you don't receive because you want to use it for your selfish motives. So I said to the Lord, I don't want the building anymore. I am giving it up. I'm never going to talk about it. Take it, Lord. We will stay the way we have been. And he was quiet for a long time. So I prayed about other things. And when I was finishing and concluding, he said, go for that building. I will be with you. Yeah, if you're clapping, clap it to Jesus. And I went, I went, I went to this pastor who took me to the landlord. The landlord was being represented by a lawyer and he asked questions of the pastor. Pastor, I don't want you to bring me people who cannot pay, who have no money. He never spoke to me. He spoke to the pastor. And the two times he spoke to me, he said, John, do you have the money? And before I could answer him, he turned to the pastor and talked about how he's disappointed with Christians because they talk big but they act little. Then in the end, he turned to me and said, I will trust you. I'll give you the building, but promise me that you're going to pay within the next ten days. If he had asked me, I would have told him the truth. I don't have the money. But he didn't ask me directly. He didn't allow me to answer. So we then went out of the office and this pastor asked me, John, do you have the money? And I said, Pastor, don't worry. Our God is the provider. I got to my office and I found a message from a friend in London who had been gone for many years. He said, I was praying last night and the Lord told me to give you this money. Can you show me how to transfer it? And he sent me the money that was like three quarters of what we needed. Glory to God. So I immediately went and paid it to the lawyer and told him, just in a few more days, I will be able to finish what I have to pay. And then we sent out word to all our branches in the villages, very remote villages. And these pastors and leaders came with meager offerings. But they brought them, small, small offerings. But when we put them together, we were able to pay for the building. Hallelujah. So what am I trying to address here, dear ladies and gentlemen? It is the motive behind our prayers. Sometimes we pray hard, but the motive doesn't move him at all. I normally share the story of Charles Finney, one of the greatest revivalists in church history. And Charles did not believe in God. He was studying to be a lawyer. And he joined a church just for social reasons. And he could play the keyboard, so they gave him to play the keyboard for the church. But he was not a believer. And there was a small group in the church led by the pastor's wife, which prayed every day and every Thursday and every Sunday morning for revival. And since he was the one playing the keyboard for them, they asked him, Charles, would you like us to pray for you to receive salvation? And he said, no, I don't want you to do that. So they left it to go. Then the second time they asked him, then the third time, and then they got irritated. Said, how could you be here playing the piano for the church? We ask you to, we are going to pray for you. God will give you the grace to receive salvation. And he said to them, look, you want revival for yourselves and God has not answered your prayers. Why should I believe he will answer your prayers for me? So you get what you want first and I see it. Then I will believe that it can work for me too. That wasn't very pleasing. They told the pastor and the pastor began to warn the church about the bad company Charles Finney was. Don't associate with him, he will corrupt you. And when Finney heard about it, he was also annoyed. Said, what have I done? Why should they make me the negative focus of their preaching? So he decided, I'm going to read the Bible because I want to disprove them. They have no right to ask for what they are asking for. That is why God is not answering them. So he went, he even wanted, but does God really exist? And if he exists, has he ever promised to do what they are asking? Do they have a right to ask? Has he ever promised and committed himself to answer what they are asking for? Do you hear, those are very pertinent questions that many believers don't ask themselves. So he began to read the Bible. He wanted to disprove these Christians. And what he got was the opposite. He found God was real. The Bible says it and he can see it in the evidence all around him. God is real. God exists. Then he wanted to know, is this God a good God? Or he's an evil one who delights in doing wickedness? Then he discovered, but this is a loving God. He's good. So he says, okay, is he, has he ever promised to do what they are asking? Has he read, he said, yes, it is here. Said, if my people who are called by my name shall humble themselves and pray and seek my face, forsake their wickedness, then I will hear from heaven. I'll forgive their sins and heal their land. Says, but yes, they are asking for something he promised. Then he said, is he a dependable God? Does he do what he promises or is he undependable? And again, he found this God is so dependable. He fulfills what he promises. I said, then why don't they have what they are asking for? Why isn't it happening? And he concluded, they don't know their God. They are not praying according to his conditions and they don't have faith in him. So he went to them next Sunday and said, you know, you should stop praying for revival because I know why you don't have revival. You don't believe in God. You don't believe in his faithfulness. You don't believe in his promises. You are just doing it for yourselves, just to keep yourselves busy and be cold spiritual. So stop. You are never going to get any answers from him. And the whole church went berserk. It was like pastor said, Charles, please kindly leave this congregation. Go somewhere else. And when he went back home that night, as he was preparing to go to bed, the Lord asked him, so Charles, now you know who I am. You know, I am faithful, I'm dependable, I'm a good God and I love to do this for my people. Are you going to just stop there? Or are you going to trust me and seek me for my promises? So Charles did not sleep the whole night. He was saying, but I did not want to be saved. I did not want, I was just asking you for them. I just wanted to know. And the Lord says, now that you know, what are you going to do about it? So next morning, it was a workday and he used to work in the office of senior lawyer who was coaching him. He decided, I'll go and open the office and leave it so that the lawyer will come and find it. Let me go up the mountain and pray for at least an hour. So he went uphill into the forest. And when he reached the place, he says, I'm going to pray here that Lord, you give me revival because you promised it in the Bible. Then he said, oh, what if someone comes down the path and they see me? I don't want them to see me praying. I don't want them to hear me praying. So I would go deeper in the woods. And he went deeper. And when he started praying, he said, no one can see me, but they can hear me. I don't want them to hear me. So he went even further. And when he got where he thought nobody could see him or hear him, he began to call out. And suddenly he realized his heart was so empty, so hardened. Nothing could move his heart. And then you realize, oh my God, I don't even have the grace to pray. I don't even know how to start. The words come out empty and dry. And he thought, oh, maybe I waited too long and I'm beyond grace. So eventually he gave up and walked back to go back to the office. And when he reached the place where he first stopped, which was exposed and by the path, he felt a pang of pain in his heart. He fell on his knees and he heard these words. Hopeless, pitiable soul you are. You have no brokenness in your heart. You have pride and you only care about people seeing you or hearing you. You have no fear for God. You put people before him. You put your own dignity before him. And it was like God was saying, what a pity with you. He broke out and cried and said, forgive me, Lord. Forgive my pride. And he found himself in a real prayer. He cried and prayed. And then he found himself laying hold of that word. If my people who are called by my name shall humble themselves and pray and seek my face and forsake their wicked ways, then will I hear from heaven and I'll forgive their sins and I'll heal their land. And he said, Lord, I choose to be among your people. I choose to humble myself. I choose to pray. And he went through it all. And eventually another scripture came to him which said, I know the thoughts I have for you. They are not thoughts of evil or failure, but they are thoughts of hope to give you the desire to end. Then you will go and call unto me and I'll answer you. You will pray to me and I'll hear you. You'll seek me and find me when you seek me with all of your heart. And that was the key that he held in. He said, Lord, I will seek you with all of my heart. So his, his attitude was, is there anything in me that is not seeking God, that is holding back, that is not accepting his standard? And whatever he found, he repented of and let go. And he was like that until suddenly he came back to his senses and he looked at his watch and it was evening. Remember when he came in the morning to open the office? Now it's evening, it is past working hours. So he panicked, oh my God, I've missed the whole day of prayer, of work because I was praying. He got up and walked back to the office. And as he was walking, he tried to pray, to continue the prayer because it felt really good and cleansing while it lasted. But this time he realized he couldn't ask for forgiveness anymore. He was looking for something that he could present before God in repentance and he couldn't find anything. Again, he was scared. He said, was I too bold? Again, he was scared, he said, "Was I too bold? Did I speak too boldly before God? Now he doesn't even want to hear me?" Anyway, he got to the office. His boss had already left. He went in and decided, instead of going back home, "Let me make a fire here and spend some time thinking about what has transpired in the day." So he made a fire in the fireplace, and then he turned around to go and sit down, and there, standing before him was the Lord Jesus Christ. And he was boom! He said, "At that moment, waves and waves of him, the Lord's love poured upon him. He fell down on his knees, eventually collapsed, and the waves continued coming. And all he could hear was, 'I love you. I love you, and I trust, I thank you for your trust.'" Then he said, "The moment came when he felt, 'I can't take this anymore. This is too much.'" So it was like electric current going through him, and he started crying to the Lord, "Please, Lord, stop, stop." And it stopped, and he was lying there for hours. When he woke up, he felt so weak physically, but his spirit was high up. He was full of joy, full of strength, full of love, and he knew, "Wow, I have met with Jesus, my Lord." And he walked back home, just saying, "Lord, I give you my life. I will never turn to anything else. I am available, use me." So he goes home, and the family is sleeping, he goes straight to bed. And in the morning, his mother is up and has prepared breakfast. And she asked him, "Charles, what happened to you last night?" He said, "Why, ma'am?" He said, "The moment you came in the house, it broke into power that we have never experienced before. I knew you came with something that you have never brought home before." Yeah, give the glory to the Lord. He explained to her, and she knelt down and said, "Will you pray for me to receive this, Lord Jesus?" She gave her life to the Lord. Later, as he was going out, he found his father by the gate, a wooden gate. And as he was trying to open it, he saw his son. And he looked at him, and he was bewildered, he ran away. He ran away. Later on, in the day, they met again, and he told him, "Son, what has come over you? There is a glory upon you that is difficult to look into." And Charles Finney gave him the story. The father gave his life to Jesus Christ. Later that evening, they sat down to dinner with Finney's brother. A very, he was wayward, he was in drugs, he was in so many bad habits. And when the son, when they sat, Finney said to his brother, "Will you pray for the food?" And he began to say, "Father." And somehow, it was like something hit him. He rose up and ran upstairs to his room and locked himself up. They finished eating, and eventually, Charles Finney went to his room and pleaded with him until he opened. And he said, "I couldn't talk to God. It was like judgment seat. I am not worthy, I'm not even worthy to call him my father." So Finney spoke to him, explained more, and eventually led him to the Lord Jesus. That was the beginning of a life of a revivalist. Charles Finney. What do you learn out of that? So many precious lessons. He prayed for revival in one day, and God did. The other team had been praying for revival for years, and they had never got it. He was the one who brought revival to them. And they were filled with the Holy Spirit. The pastor felt disappointed that this young man whom he had been preaching against was doing this. So he resigned and left, his marriage was broken up. Many, like 15 years later, he meets Charles Finney again in a gospel meeting and was able to receive Christ as his personal Savior and was filled with the Holy Spirit. When Charles Finney was, I mean, he had begun to be used by God in so many different ways. After about a year, his congregation, his denomination, they were called the Congregationalists. They recognized the hand of the Lord upon his life, and they agreed to ordain him to become a pastor, but really, an evangelist. And he got to the day of his ordination, and he arrived late. So the hall was already full of people. He could see his position where he was supposed to sit, and there was a man on the pulpit who was praying. But Charles did not realize was praying. He thought he was making a speech, until he got into his seat to listen to the words of this man and realized, "Oh, my God, the man is praying." And he thought, "He doesn't know God. You don't talk to God like that. His heart is nowhere near God. He's not even reverent that God is here." And in agony, Charles went into prayer. And to pray for, this man. This man, his name was called Father Nash. If you have ever read about the revivals, Charles Finney and Father Nash worked together a lot. Father Nash was the intercessor. He went ahead, prayed until he got the breakthrough, and he would leave, then Charles Finney would come in the city, and the revivals would take place. But this time, Father Nash is praying on the pulpit, and Charles Finney is praying for him, and saying, "Lord, this man does not know you. Reveal yourself to him, take him out of action until you break him to the point where he will know you and have a living relationship with you." And shortly after that, Father Nash was taken ill and was in bad shape for many, many months. By the time he came back, he was an intercessor. Amen. Why have I told you all of this? So it's first to say, examine your heart, whether you are standing in the faith. Prove yourselves. Don't you know that Christ Jesus lives in you unless you have become reprobate? Many of us approach him on our own terms and in our own ways, with our own motives, and on our own conditions. And God will never be moved by anybody's preferences. He has his own preferences. "If my people who are called by my name shall humble themselves and pray and seek my face and forsake their wicked ways, then will I hear..." I love the word "then." It means, "Until you do that, I'm not going to be moved. I'm not going to be moved. But if you do those, then will I hear from heaven. I will forgive your sins. I don't care how big they are, I'll forgive them. Then I will heal your land. I'll visit your land, I'll heal the land, I'll heal the economy, I'll heal the social settings, I will heal whatever is wrong in the land if you do what I require." I wanted to say that to you, because that man in Bogota, he said, "I have been praying for 30 years. Revival has not happened." And so, don't raise their hopes too high. My, since that time, I have doubled my efforts to raise the hopes of the people. Trusting how many big answers I got from different places. Some people would talk about revival is when the Lord moves, and so many souls come into the kingdom. Amen. Other people talked about when God moves, and so many powerful miracles are performed, advancing his kingdom. Amen. And others would talk about many things, the growth of religion, growth of this and that. Then it was at that time that George Otis from Washington, this, no, Washington State, produced the documentary video Transformations. It had the story of Guatemala, Uganda, Colombia, and another place in the US. And so, some people would say, "Oh, when God moves," because the Guatemala story, God moved in the country, crime stopped, prisons were closed, then the soils were touched, the climate changed. Instead of one rainy season in a year, they began getting two. The carrots grew bigger than potatoes, sweet potatoes. I mean, everything changed. And so, some people said, "That is revival." And yes, that's revival. But is it always like that everywhere they find revival? Because until we can standardize, then we cannot learn from others. Someone talks here about benchmarking. You cannot benchmark until you get the basics, and you seek those basics. I was in Fiji with George Otis, and there was this story of God coming down. Then the fish in this ocean suddenly grew bigger. From just like 10 centimeters, they grew to 30 centimeters. And from getting like 100 fish a day for the whole village, they began getting 10,000. And that was part of the revival. And many people came to the Lord because of those visible manifestations. People who depended on drugs, opium, they grew farms of opium, suddenly gave their lives to the Lord Jesus. They cut down the opium and brought it in this village square and burnt it. So what is revival? And after about four, five years, this is the conclusion we came to with my small team I was studying with, that revival is a divine visitation from God and to his people, resulting in a greater manifestation of his kingdom. Just that. Whether he brings miracles or not, salvations or not, changing the weather, but it's a divine visitation. There must be a calming down of God's Spirit to his people, and there must be a greater manifestation of his kingdom. It reminds me of Isaiah 60, is it 63 or 64? Where it says, "Oh, that you drained the heavens and come down." And says, "In the old days when you visited our forefathers, you came down, and the mountains quaked at your presence, and the waters boiled as you moved. Oh, that you would move again." Those are the elements that never, never, never miss in a revival, the calming down of the Holy Spirit. So our prayers should be, "Lord, will you come down?" And he told us to pray, "Let your kingdom come." So that is somewhere we can begin to seek, what does it mean to have the Spirit of God come down? And if you're reminded, I'm saying this very quickly, that the whole world is in the sway of the wicked one. That means there are powers that are covering the nations. There are forces that are separating the people from their God. And when God opens the heaven, tears those shrouds, the veil that covers the nations, when God tears that and comes down, revival starts. Like in Isaiah 25, it says, "He has sworn to destroy that veil that covers the nations, the shroud that enfolds the peoples. He will tear it open, take reproach away, take shame away, take death away, and will come and wipe the eyes, the tears of his people." Amen, glory to God. So we should position our hearts to desire the core of what God wants. He wants to come and be Emmanuel, God, among his people. And when he comes, he wants to manifest his kingdom. And the other thing is, what is God's kingdom? What are the manifestations of God's kingdom? And when will we say there is a greater manifestation of his kingdom? We should be able to point, "Don't you see this? Don't you see that? Don't you see that?" And by that, we can say, "Yeah." You know, Apostle mentioned earlier about Uganda. When George Otis wanted to do, to come and document God's move in Uganda, I think he first met with Pastor Laban Jumba here in South Africa. And he asked Laban Jumba, "Can you please facilitate me coming to Uganda?" And Pastor Laban Jumba said, "No, no, 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 no. There's no revival in Uganda. We are dealing with too many evils. We're dealing with this, and this, and this, and this. We cannot even say, 'Come and document revival.' There's no revival, we are still fighting." And later on, again, I was here in South Africa. My host was connected with George Otis, so he made the connection, and we talked on phone. And George said to me, "John, you people are too close to what God is doing. You don't even recognize what it is. But allow me to come and document it, and you'll be amazed when it is presented." I said, "Well, I'll do it, but I will not even be in the country when you come." And he came, I was not in the country, but we managed to start capturing the stories. It's only after we looked at the stories, we said, "Oh, my God, this is not normal Christianity as you see in many countries. This is something gracious that God is doing in our midst." I remember one time, I was coming from southwest Uganda, and I stopped somewhere on the way to spend the night. And I called for the pastors, and they came, about 200 pastors. And I showed them that video. And that night, they cried, and they wept, and they were just repenting. "Forgive us for not recognizing the gracious hand you have put upon our land. Help us to position right, help us to even respond more." Because they saw God at work like they had never recognized in our midst. Beloved, I'm sure I'll talk about this later in the evening. One of the greatest elements that make prayer effective, and many times that is missed concerning prayer for nations, is the destiny of God for a nation. What is the destiny of God for a nation? It is the purpose for which God established that nation on earth in such a generation. In other words, there are expectations from God that this nation will be this to me. Like you see, he is the one who raised Israel, to be a banner to the nations, to be a means by which he would make himself known to the nations. You remember like in Egypt, when he wanted to bring out the Israelis? He would say to Moses, "Go and do this that the nations may..." He would say to Moses, "Go and do this that the nations may know. There's no any other God but Me. Go and do this that Egypt may know." So Israel was a banner. You interact with Israel, God will show Himself. Whether He crushes you, or He blesses you, or He redeems you, but He will get known. So every nation has got a purpose. And every nation is raised up for such a time as this. When we began to pray for Uganda, we were praying about issues that were either temporary, like HIV and AIDS, war, dictatorship. And those would go, and then we would stop praying. Then other problems would come. And we would then engage and pray for some time, then they, they would go and then would stop praying. Because our motivation to pray was temporal and was earthly, until He told us, "Pray for My purposes to come to pass in your nation. Because as your nation moves into My purposes, I'll fight your wars, take away your crises, and I'll show My glory in the land." And we began to do that. I can't say we have always been consistent. Sometimes we grow weak, something comes and shakes us up, and we rise up. And He helped us to build the infrastructure that sustains prayer. In the old days when we would pray, we would pray for only our own denomination, our own ministries, our own... But then He taught us, "If you're going to pray for My purposes, you've got to open your hearts and be able to carry My burden for the whole land." These are things that change the dimensions of prayer in our land. And these are things I would love to try and portray in the time we have. And then maybe say, "Can we build together towards a better approach and a more persistent and consistent approach?" Amen. I want to stop here and encourage you. Maybe you can come two by two and just go before the Lord and say, "Lord, teach us how to pray." Because we know You love prayer, You answer prayer, and You do great things through prayer. But even in the Bible, we see Jesus teaching His disciples how to pray. Teach us how to pray and to pray right. We don't want to pray with our own motives so that we don't receive. We don't want to pray when our sins are separating us from You. We don't want to pray a miss. Teach us how to pray. We are the ones standing in the gap for this land today. I would love to talk more about the destiny of South Africa, especially in the continent of Africa. We'll be doing that. So we are going to rise up and we are going to go before the Lord and just ask the Lord, "Please, teach us how to pray." If I may, I want to invite some of the leaders to come up on the platform. And leaders, because the Bible says, "And I looked for a man among them who would make up the hedge and stand in the gap on behalf of the land." Let us have some leaders come up here and lead prayer. Raise a cry out of the soul of this land. And let the Lord hear a cry from men and women among us. Amen. Please come up. Thank you, my Lord. Thank you, Jesus. And let us rise unto our feet, please. Let us believe that we are representative of spiritual leaders in the land, and our prayers are not just from our own hearts, but they are a cry coming out of the land. I'll ask you to find one person and hold both hands of that person, and we are going to pray together. "When two people shall agree to ask anything of the Father, it shall be granted." Amen. So I'll, I'll kick you off into prayer, and then I'll hand over to these leaders. "Father, in the name that is above every name we come before You. Start by giving thanks to God. Give thanks to Him." And say, "Lord, thank You for opening our eyes. Thank You for moving our hearts. Father, we want to thank You for this day, for this day, and even for the day tomorrow. Father, we thank You for the men and women who love You and want to see Your kingdom come. Father, we pray that we being here shall be acceptable before You as a sacrifice for the land of South Africa. Lord, we pray that Your Spirit shall reach through the layers that are covering our hearts and that You speak into our hearts like nobody else can. Oh, God, bring us revelation. Bring us understanding. Bring us the faith that we need. Bring us the grace that we need that we may be able to stand in the gap for this great nation of South Africa, that our prayers will change the spiritual atmosphere of this land, that we shall open up the heavens over this land and let Your presence calm down on this land. Oh, God, King of glory, blessed is Your holy name. Blessed is Your holy name. We pray that, Father, this weekend shall be significant for the land of South Africa, that You will move, oh, God, the pillars, the walls, the shades that have been upon this land. And You will begin to show us Your ways, my Lord. Forgive the sins of our land. Heal this land. Heal this land. Heal this land. Go ahead. Go ahead and cast your prayers before Him. So, Father, we pray that You move us in this place. Thank You, Lord, for hearing our prayers in the name of Jesus. Hear our leaders, God Almighty, the fivefold ministers as they stand before You. Father, You said, "If my people who are called by My name shall humble themselves, seek My face and turn from their wicked ways, I will hear, and I will heal, and I will answer." Thank You, Father God, that You are the God who hears us. Give us a heart to turn. Give us a heart to turn, to turn from our wicked ways. Oh, God, as a nation, give us a heart to turn so that we may see a breakthrough of revival, open our eyes to see, to pray from the place of purpose, to pray from a place of seeking Your purpose, to pray from a place not of selfish ambition, to pray from a place of seeking, Father God, the purpose and the destiny that You have for our nation. Thank You, Father God, that You gather us. You align us. Thank You for alignment. Thank You for spiritual alignment. Thank You for spiritual alignment. Thank You for spiritual alignment. Thank You that You are aligning us. You are aligning us in the Spirit. You are aligning us in the Spirit. Thank You that You are aligning us in the Spirit. Thank You for spiritual alignment in the name of Jesus. Thank You for spiritual alignment. Father God, as we come to the cross, thank You for spiritual alignment. When fathers gather, when spiritual leaders gather, You said, "Gather unto Me, Father God, those who have covenanted themselves unto Me by sacrifice." As we gathered this afternoon, thank You for aligning us again. 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 Hear our intercessions. Hear our prayer. Thank You for aligning us again. We thank You for alignment. We thank You for alignment. We thank You for alignment. Once again, into Your purpose, into Your agenda for our nation. We give You praise, oh, God. We give You honor, oh, Father. We receive this word. It's a word of exhortation. It's a word of warning. It's a word of caution. It's a word of awakening. We receive this word, oh, God, that You check our motives, that You check our levels of faith, to see where we are at, whether are we praying from a place of faith or from a place of doubt. Oh, God, align us in the place of faith. Restore our faith. Let us believe again that what You said You will do, you are able to do it. What You said You will do, You said in Your word, "I will do a quick work." You said, "I will do a quick work and cut it short in righteousness." Thank You, Father God, for a quick work. You are doing a quick work. Even this afternoon, we receive a quick work. There's something quick. There's something sudden. Lord, we receive, and Lord, we believe. Oh, God, help our unbelief. Help our unbelief. Deliver us from unbelief. Deliver us from doubt. Deliver us, Father God, from doubt and hopelessness. Let the church have hope again. Let the church rise in faith again. Help us to see what You are already doing, because You are already doing it. You are already doing great things. There are things You are doing. You are moving us. Even this meeting, You are doing great things. Even this gathering, You are doing something, something wonderful, something great. As in the days of Ezekiel, Ezekiel 37, where dry bones began to come together, the army of the Lord starting to rise up. When dry bones come together and the net bone connected, Father God, with other bones, and every bone connect to another. Lord, connect us in the Spirit. Lord, connect us again. Let the army arise. Let the army arise. Let the army arise. Let the army arise. The army of the fivefold ministers, the army of fathers, the army of spiritual fathers in the nation, in the south of our nation, in the east of our nation, in the west of our nation, in the north of our nation. We speak forth, let the bones arise. Let the bones arise. We prophesy. We prophesy. We prophesy. Oh, for South Africa, lift up your heads, all ye gays of South Africa. Be lifted up, you everlasting doors of South Africa. The King of glory will come in. Who is this King of glory? The Lord, strong and mighty, the Lord, mighty in battle. We speak to the gates, the northern gates, the southern gates, the eastern gates, the western gates. Lift up your heads, all ye gays of South Africa. Be lifted up, you ancient doors. The King of glory will come in. Oh, King of glory, come in into South Africa. Oh, King of glory, march in. Oh, King of glory, march in. Oh, King of glory, march in. Oh, King of glory, we rebekosiah. We invite you. We invite you. Let the gates open. 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 Let the gates open to usher in a righteous people that fear God. Open the gates. The righteous nation that fears the Lord will come in. Open the gates. The righteous nation who fears God will come in. Let the gates open. Let the gates open so that a righteous nation will come in. O Kebosiah, thank You, Lord. Thank You for answer. Thank You for answering our prayer. Thank You for answering our prayer. In the name of Jesus, we receive, we receive a highway, a highway of holiness, a highway of holiness, a highway of holiness in South Africa. From Messina to Cape Town, a highway of holiness. From the east to the west, a highway of holiness in our nation. Let a highway of holiness. Hobbysinoga, we give You praise, oh, Father. We glorify Your name, oh, God. We give You praise, oh, Lord. We glorify Your name. We glorify Your name.
Thank you, Father. Thank you. Thank you, Lord, for the word we have received. Thank you, Father, for the questions. Father God Almighty, provoking questions that have been asked. What is revival? What is the manifestation of the kingdom of God? These are questions that we need to hear. These are questions that we need to understand. These are questions that we need to answer. Father God Almighty, in the name of Jesus Christ, that, Lord, You have a purpose for our nation. You have a destiny for our nation, Father God, and You desire, Father God, to see Your purpose fulfilled. You desire to hear us cry to You for Your purpose for our nation, Father God Almighty. I'm standing here and I'm reminded, Father, that in 2008, You spoke and You said, "Father God Almighty, our nation is the feet of Africa. South Africa is the feet of Africa, but the feet are chained. The feet are chained. And if we would pray to You, Father God Almighty, You will hear, You will reveal the destiny of the nation, and You will break the chains so that we may move, so that we may take destiny. Africa to have destiny. 2008, Lord, what have we done? And in Your word, You say, "After seventy years are completed, I will visit You. I will do, I will perform My good work towards You. For I alone knows the plans I have for You. Those plans are not to harm You. Those plans are to give You a future and a hope." Father God, we have received this word for ourselves personally, but not for the nation. Father God, not to ask You for the destiny of the nation. And You have revealed the destiny. Father God, You have sent prophets, day and night. You have sent prophets, like You have done now, to speak to us, that we are a nation of destiny. We are a nation of revival. We are a nation of restitution. We are a nation of restoration. We are the nation that You have chosen. Father God, to release the fire of revival. Father God, to spread to the all, to the whole Africa and to the nations of the... Father, we stand before You this morning, this afternoon, as fathers and mothers of this nation. And we are asking You, Lord, to forgive us. Forgive us for neglecting the important things. For neglecting the important things, the things that are important to You. We have neglected the most important things, Your purpose for our nation. Father God Almighty, we have been concerned about many things, but the destiny of the nation. And, Father, we are coming to You. We humble ourselves, and we ask You, "Forgive us, Lord. Forgive us." You have been sending prophets, Father God Almighty, day and night, to remind us, to remind us, for the purpose that You have for this nation, for the destiny of this nation. Africa has been waiting. Nations have been waiting, Father God Almighty. And we are busy, busy with many things, busy with many things. But the most important thing, the things that You are concerned about. Father, forgive us.
Yes, Lord. Eva Sandoa, she killed.
Forgive us.
Forgive us, Lord.
Lord, You have revealed Your heart. You have revealed Your purpose. You have broken the chains, but You are still bound. We are still bound. We cannot move. We are not moving forward. We are bound, Father God Almighty, by many things. Father, deliver us. Deliver us. Deliver us, Lord.
Deliver us, Lord.
Deliver us. Deliver us, Father. In the name of Jesus. That as a nation, we may unite around your purpose. We may be concerned about your purpose for our nation. Because Lord, that is what we are begging. You are looking for begging, better. People who will receive your begging and carry your begging and pray your begging. And their brothers and try to you for the destiny of our nation. Father, in this gathering, raise, raise begging, better. Raise begging, better. That will be for saying about your purpose for our nation, that will pray, Father God Almighty, to you for the fulfillment and the manifestation of your purpose. Father, in this gathering, raise, raise, better.
Yes, Lord. Ika daba handa, ika brahanda basi, ika zikuho, iza zikuho. Yes, Lord. Ika basaka ba, ika la ba, arra basande. Ika daba handa la ba, ika daka daka ba. Yes, Lord. Ima sebocha, ibra zikili bi. Ika daba, yes, Lord. Andaba sanda la branda skali. Ika likili mojka nikada, alla kaba sa.
Father, you spoke through your purpose that you must wait to offer with the prophetic word that you revealed to our nation. About our nation, Father God Almighty, and we are not done. Lord, have mercy. Have mercy. Kukuba, Baba Baba. Yes, Lord. Mercy, Lord. Mercy, Lord. Mercy, Lord. Mercy, Lord. Iku rosko, alla basanda la branda skapa, hasta kaba. Ika likili broska nikada la ba, haddaba, haddaba. Yes, Lord. Ika cha seka hadiya, iku hoski levi helebi. Ida nikada ba ha. Ie sandoske prekileki bi. Saka daka ba, hali gada la ba. Ika likili branda kaba, hasta kaba, kali gada ba. Sanda la banda kada. Ika dosu du. The purpose of God. Ika da yo purpose, Lord. Alito si bra kada kada kaba sa. Ida da 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 muski, ipaka di gada ba ha. Andasen dekili mushka, andaka, andasanda ba. Ika tila masa ba kaba, arra kada kada kaba. Ika likili branda skali gada. Ika daka daka ba, ika daka daka ba nikada. Ira kaba kaba la ba. Ika daka daka kaba, hali gada la ba. Ida la branda skali gada. Ika bali gada la, ika dala ba, haddaba, hadda. Arra kaba sakapa. Mercy, brother. Mercy, Lord. Ika seke broska tiya. Mercy, Lord. Ika ti namaskah. Osino hoski lehe. Yes, ali broska hoska. Arra kaba hali gada. Mercy, Lord. Iku hoski lehe. Ida li broska ba. Ida li ku hoski levi. Ika daka daka ba, arra kaba sia. Ibra sanda karia. Iba lakata kateli bi. Ida li gada la ba. Ibra sanda kato. Ika ta. Yes, Lord. Ie sande she. Yes, andika tava. Arreko dukuku po. Ika daka daka kaba sanda. Help us, Lord. Ida li brazaka tuski dekili kadiya. Ipa kada sanda kalia. Arra kaba kaba liyada. Ika likili ndulu moskiya. Ida da 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 doski branda kala ba, haskunda. Ika di kala branda skali gada la ba. Arra kada 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 kaba, sanda la branda basi prekili ki. Ika daba hali ka.
In Jesus' name, we pray. Our Father, our God. Thank you, Father. Thank you, Lord, for provoking us to pray and to seek your face. We give honor and glory to you. And if you believe, and I believe, and we together the pray. Same key. The Holy Spirit must come down and Africa will be saved. And Africa, and Africa will be saved. Heaven and Africa will be saved. The Holy Spirit, the Holy Spirit must and Africa, and Africa will be saved. The Holy Spirit, the Holy Spirit must come down and Africa will be saved. Amen. Amen. You may be seated. Thank you so much for dropping that bomb, that seed that provokes us to pray. I want to give this opportunity. I know that when the service goes this direction, it's difficult to do other things. But I think it's important to open up an opportunity for conversation. I'll take one or two inputs, questions. These are fathers who are sitting here. And I think God has already spoken in what needs to be done. But if you have a question, maybe you want to, and I'm not going to ask Dr. Molinde to stand. If he doesn't mind, he will answer it seated. So that we don't, you know, we give him time to gather his energy, still has an evening. But I want us to engage him, I want us to engage him. This is an opportunity. He has shared his heart. Maybe you have a personal question concerning the nation, the territory, how we engage, how we pray. Already the things that he has said here are key. Number one, pray based on the destiny of the nation. So you don't pray personal prayers. You pray prayers that are based on the destiny of the nation. Number two, what's your motive, why are you praying? What is it that is calling you to pray? And he spoke about praying the kingdom, that revival is when God manifests his kingdom in the earth. And so we've heard what he has said and I want to give this opportunity to engage him and feel free, please, to engage him, to say, how do we do this? Or how do we do that? Or how can you advise on this or advise on that? So we'll just take a few Q and A and I'll advise you to please ask and not say, I wish I would have asked. Let's ask, he's here, he's among us. Let's draw from these fathers while they are here. Sifun, they say in KwaZulu-Ful, suck everything you can so that when he speaks, we are happy. Any questions? And it's also okay not to have questions. But are there any questions? Anything you want to engage him in? Yes, there's a question over there. Is there a mic? Okay. Amen. I think mine, I'm asking to Dr. Molinde, but also it should be directed to the fathers because we are privileged to have the fathers in the house. He spoke about the destiny of a nation. One thing that I've learned about when you go to Uganda, you realize the whole international, when they speak about the destiny of a nation, they speak one language. It's not something like someone will say the destiny of one nation is this, the other will say the other. It's something that the whole international, they speak one language. So the question is, how to know the destiny of a nation? That is a nation where can speak one language and are able to address the agendas of the kingdom, even the understanding of the destiny of our nation in South Africa? And maybe riding on that, we could direct it to him and say, how did they in Uganda get to know the destiny of Uganda? So that from that example, we can then reflect on our own. How did they come to that place? Because it's no different than we have. We are also different denominations. They are also different denominations. How did, in Uganda, how did they come to knowing the destiny of the nation of Uganda? That made them, as you say, speaking one language? How did they get to that place? I think I'm interested in the journey. Okay, I'll take a second question, that's the first question. There was another hand? Oh, you're good. Okay, there's a hand over there. We'll take three questions at a time and then engage and allow doctor to respond. There's two hands over there. One and one, okay. Noted, Mamra Piri?
Thank you Apostle. I just, I have two questions. One may be directed to Dr. Molinde, but the other one is directed to Apostle Kaboro. The first one that I wanted to ask to Dr. Molinde is the importance of repentance of the fathers as well as of the church in the nation's revival? Because we have followed him and we have seen the emphasis on the spirit of repentance, even including changing how you have been doing things, thinking that you were doing something right to what the Lord wants you to do, even in this program that we called the church. The second question is, as my brother has said there, that we get to feel that there's things that people say that this is the destiny of our nation. And Slambi is an organized place now. What is the authentic destiny of our nation that we should be pursuing? Thank you.
Right. Okay. The previous question is the same as the first one and then the earlier one is the different one. So I hope we've got it. We've got the two questions. There's another hand over here.
Thank you Apostle. My question is, if we look at a country the same as South Africa, where we have different denominations, not only denominations, there's also cultural issues as well. How do we as a church bring about the nation to come to an understanding of the same purpose? How do we reach out to other denominations, other cultures? Thank you.
Right, I think, can we take three at a go? So that's the first three. So in essence, Dr. Molinde, I think they are asking one question. The destiny of a nation, how do you discover it? What was the Uganda experience that made the different denominations say this is the destiny of the nation? I think in the main. Because I think that question is similar with that other one. My brother, you had a first question, that was a bit different. What was it again? Repentance. So that's two questions. Can we have the red mic working? Okay, there it is.
Thank you so much. Bless you for the questions asked. I think I'll start with the very first one about repentance. The Bible says, if I regard sin in my heart, the Lord will not hear my prayers. So that's the principle of the kingdom. If I regard sin in my heart, the Lord will not hear my prayers. And we see the great preachers in the Bible, including our Lord Jesus Christ, John the Baptist and the others. Their message always started with repent for the Kingdom of God is near. In other words, repentance brings us into alignment with God, where we agree with God. And the Bible says, this is the confidence we have in approaching him, that when we ask anything according to his will, he will hear us. And when he hears us, we have what we ask. What is sin? If you ask anybody what is sin, they say maybe doing something wrong or this or that. But in the Bible, we have it in James, chapter four, verse 17, that he who knows what is good to do and does not do it, that is sin unto him. So it's like, if you know the will of God and you don't submit to it, that is sin. It's another way of saying you are rebelling against God. You are disobeying God, you are opposing God. So before God will work with any of us, we have got to come back to alignment and that's repentance. So without repentance, we cannot really expect God to do very much with us. Repentance is coming back to him. Repentance is aligning back with him. I hope that makes it clear. And another scripture says in John, chapter, first John, chapter three, verse five, that we know he came to take away our sins and in him is no sin. For he who does sin, does so with lowlessness. And lowlessness is saying, I don't want to be told what to do. I don't want to, anybody to guide me, to limit me, to, I want to do my own thing. And that is where we fall in sin. We do our own thing, we are in rebellion. But he calls that lowlessness. Again, before we can walk with God, we need to come back from that spirit and come back to submission. Amen. Now, coming to the issue of the destiny of a nation, that's one of the trickiest things to deal with. In Uganda, when the Lord told us about the destiny, we were puzzled, we said, Lord, we don't see Uganda specifically mentioned in the scriptures. How do we begin to even ask you for your purposes for Uganda? And the answer was like, one, go and study God's dealings with Israel. Because Israel is the first born of all nations. So with Israel, God demonstrated his principles when it comes to justice, when it comes to caring for the disadvantaged, the widows, the children, the orphans. So in Israel, God established his principles for dealing with the nation. And if we learn that, we can apply that to our nations. But that is still generic, it applies to everyone. So when it comes to the specific nation, the Lord say to us, go back and study the history of your nation vis a vis the gospel. When did the gospel first come into the nation? What was the nation like before the gospel came? What were its beliefs? What were its traditions? What were its worldviews? It gives us the contrast. It gives us the contrast between our nation in the world and our nation after the gospel came. Then we study how the gospel impacted the land. In some lands, the gospel had real impact and changed a lot of things. In other lands, there was a lot of resistance. But if you study that resistance, you begin to see the character of the nation.